It's gonna be next Friday, not tomorrow, but the week after.
Did you get yours, Mick?
I've gotten mine a while back. I've, I'm part of the herd. It's been three weeks since my, my second shot.
Pam's gonna be late. She's rebooting her computer. She's having problems. She has texted Linda about it.
Oh, that's even worse.
Wow. I couldn't get in on it either for a while.
All right, Roger, we have five.
Yes, I am here.
Okay, good man.
Thank you.
It may be a while before Pam gets there. Linda just told me she's having major problems.
What's worse, major, uh, never mind.
How's the boats doing?
What's that?
How's the boats doing?
Lot of grinding. Lot of itchy, scratchy. We have five. Zach, you wanna get going?
I'm ready if you guys are.
Okay. Everyone ready?
Yeah, I'm ready.
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 Mike, y'all set? Okay, all right. Uh, welcome to the March fourth, two thousand twenty-one City of Manistee Planning Commission meeting. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic, the mission and the nation.
At ease.
Thank you. Please take role.
Commissioner Slawinski?
Here.
Commissioner Semansky?
Here.
Commissioner Memberto? Commissioner Weiner? Commissioner McBride?
Yes.
Commissioner Yoder?
Yeah.
Chair Whitlock?
Here, thank you. Approval agenda at this time, the planning commission can take action to approve the March fourth, two thousand twenty-one agenda. Is there any, is there a motion?
Shumansky, I'll make that motion.
Second.
By Mick, second by?
A second.
Bob, any discussion? None? Please take role.
Commissioner Slawinski?
Yes.
Commissioner Semansky?
Yes.
Commissioner McBride?
Yes.
Commissioner Yoder?
Yes.
Chair Whitlock?
Yes, thank you. Approval of minutes at this time, the planning commission can approve the February fourth, two thousand twenty-one minutes. Is there a motion?
Some motion.
I want the motion to approve.
Motion by Marlene, second by Bob.
Oh, okay.
Any discussion?
No, I didn't say nothing.
You didn't? Okay. Please take role.
Commissioner Slawinski?
Yes.
Commissioner Semansky?
Yes.
Commissioner McBride?
Yes.
Commissioner Yoder?
Yes.
Chair Whitlock?
Yes, thank you. Public hearings?
Mark?
Yes.
We, we need you guys to state where you are located for, for the, um, the Zoom meeting as part of that.
Like City of Manistee or?
It's a requirement under it. So if you guys could do roll call again in your state where you're located this evening.
Okay, so each commissioner has to give a location?
That's correct.
Okay, so we'll just go through it, Mick?
Okay.
All right, Nick Shumansky, three, three, two, Fifth Street, Manistee.
Uh, fine at Earth, out Manistee, our side.
Roger?
Oh, uh, Roger Yoder, Manistee, uh, Michigan.
Uh, Marlene?
Marlene. Marlene, two seventeen River Street, City of Manistee.
Okay, is that Pammy on?
Looks like she's there.
Yep.
Hello, Pam.
You're muted.
Muted, Pam.
Sorry, I'm late. I had computer problems. I had a crash and started all over.
That's okay. Uh, Pam, we're at the point where, uh, giving location. Our location.
Okay, four ten Pine Street, Manistee.
Chair Whitlock, three sixty-three Tenth Street in Manistee.
Thank you guys.
Thank you, Nancy. Public hearings, uh, we have none. Uh, public comment on agenda-related items. If you have a comment, uh, please raise your hand since we're in a Zoom meeting. Uh, you'll have three minutes to comment on agenda-related items. At the three-minute mark, um, the moderator will shut down the microphone, so. At that, with this, uh, is any comment on the agenda related items?
So, uh, public person number one, I forgot your full name here. Um, let me see here. Melissa Spilker, do you have anything to say on agenda-related items?
That's a, I'm sorry, Zach, that's a friend of mine. I just pushed the same link.
Oh, okay.
Sorry about that. It's one of my.
Well, moving to the next one then. Uh, Richard Blue, do you have anything to say on agenda-related items?
No, thank you.
Aaron Glenn, do you have anything to say on agenda-related items?
No, thank you.
And Beth, do you have anything to say on agenda-related items? Beth, do you have anything to say on agenda-related items? Beth, do you have anything to say on agenda-related items? And we just had somebody. Okay. We just had somebody come in here just at the last second. Uh, Regrassit, do you have anything to say on agenda-related items? Is, is that, am I saying that right? Regrassit? Do you have anything to say on agenda-related items?
They're muted.
Regrassit, do you have anything to say on agenda-related items?
No.
Thank you.
All right.
Chair?
Thank you, Zach. Okay, new business, uh, Iron Works Special Use Permit Transfer. Zach, I will hand it off to you.
Yeah, so this transfer here is for Ken Armour. I believe he's here. Um, it's a transfer, and from my understanding, so with the city, a special use permit, the permit is tied to the property owner. And when the property owner changes, the SUP stays with the property. So it looks like Ken had some changing in his investors and, and the group involved with that. And so when that changes, the, the name on the SUP has to change, but that has to be, that has to be, um, approved by the planning commission. So if there's any other questions there, I'll, I'll take questions on that. Otherwise, I'm gonna turn it over to Ken to just kinda give you a better explanation of what he's doing.
Okay, all right, thank you. Ken?
Okay, good to see you guys again, especially Roger. You look good up there in the corner of my screen. Um, the only thing that's, uh, the only thing that's changed is the, uh, Zach caught it. Uh, prior to Zach, it was quite a bit of turnover there. And the LLC was a different LLC, and then the last guy put in the wrong, uh, property ID number in the SUP. So nothing's changed on what we're asking, but Zach, uh, caught some really good things that, uh, that, uh, would have been very problematic later on, because this SUP was, uh, slated to go on somebody else's property. So Zach caught that, brought it to my attention, hey, we need to bring this back to the planning commission. None of the terms have changed or anything, uh, but that's basically it. I met with, uh, Mark, uh, Miller yesterday, uh, because of Thad, I guess is a whole nother subject, but just to keep you cluing in, we're working weekly on this. Um, I got the advice of Thad. I met with, uh, Mark. It was really helpful. He's going to, uh, kinda act as a liaison. Uh, he's gonna throw some stuff at you guys, uh, soon about the next step or phase two that I'm working on. Um, I have a really good tenant for the industrial spot that we're working on for the Cannabis Rental. It's a really good group. Uh, I don't know if you guys have talked to him. Somebody you have, I'm sure. But, uh, yeah, things are moving along good. Uh, I talked to, remember the, the guy that did the charity fruit basket in that side? In the side yard there?
Oh, yes.
The farmer, whatever. I talked to him last weekend and I agreed, uh, I told him I'd meet him again Saturday, but I agreed to, uh, let him use that property again, uh, free. He's gonna, uh, start planting in the next week or two, and then obviously as, uh, as, uh, Mark had mentioned to me, Ken, you're doing a good job so far with Goodwill. We know we got the, uh, River Walk going. I'm donating that property again so they can farm that again this year with all the seniors. Um, there's a couple of other things I'm coming online with that I think you'll be very happy with. With the, the big, large center area of the place, leaving most of it, uh, wide open for the fruit market and the community event space that, that we had talked about. So things are finally moving along in the direction where we were hoping. Um, you know, we give the property to every year, the Christmas parade, we let them, stage all their horses and everything there, and if you guys see other good, uh, good duties that, uh, that I can help with, feel free to reach out to me. Um, we're more than happy to work with the community. Keep Roger off my back.
Hey, Ken?
Yeah.
Question, could you, uh, clarify, uh, what Mark you met with?
Miller.
Mark Miller, Chamber of Commerce.
Chamber. I asked Thad who the best was, because I didn't wanna keep, I know I've met with all you guys and we had really good meetings, and I didn't wanna keep dragging everybody through and talking to them, and Thad said to me, uh, the two things that Saturday pressed on me the most was number one. He said he's not gonna give you any money, so I, I understood that from the last two years, and, uh, he said probably your best approach would work through Mark, and the first time I met him, I've been talking to him, but I met him and he spent an hour with me and we rocked around the property, and I was very impressed with him, by the way. Whoever hired him, I think, uh, did a good job, but he's definitely, his heart's in the right place for sure. Um, but yeah, he's helping me through some things. He's, uh, brought on a couple lines. I've, uh, met with a couple of local people in your city there that wanna do a, uh, tell me to shut up when you want, but, uh, some nice local people that wanna try and replace that, uh, remember the ice cream parlor there, of course, the world famous one? Um, they wanna put in small ice cream parlor, a couple people wanna do it, uh, tanning salon, and there's some businesses now that, uh, the new regime, which is including you guys, I think has done a phenomenal job for the city. Um, so there seems to be a need for some good space down there. Uh, reasonable space, obviously the rent prices are a lot lower up there, but the things that you guys have done so far to help me with allowing that cannabis grow, um, those are the things that, that I can give back and, you know, get the root prices where they need to be, and some of the things I talked about, Mark, um, you guys all remember the, the big argument about the signage with, uh, tell me to shut up if you guys gotta go home early or something, but I haven't had a chance to talk with you in a while. Uh, so the signage, remember the cafe nineteen oh seven, there was a big issue with the city going back and forth, and I talked to Mark and I talked to a couple other people. You know, as you're coming south on thirty-one, the sign that says, "Welcome to Historic Manistee," and it points to the left and it says, "River Street."
Oh.
Uh, what's that? So, I'm, I'm hoping they'll consider, once we develop this, that was one of the things Mark's gonna talk to you. Maybe we can put another sign on top of that that says, uh, the Peninsula District maybe goes to the, uh, to the right, just something to show really different area than the River Street, but the history of that, Iron Works and with now the Milwaukee House, and I think Manistee is gonna have so much to offer down there in that peninsula, and as Mark said, I take it as a flattering compliment, but he said, Ken, you're gonna be a pioneer here. I think this is gonna open up the, uh, the whole Peninsula District and all the property owners that I've been talking to, they're open to it too. Um, but I think, you know, that's something I guess will, that'll be in my next, uh, request, and Mark's gonna meet with you guys and talk with you, and he liked the idea, and I think it'll satisfy her. She's got a good business. I mean, they're good people that I know of, and they do a great business, and you go in that and the history of the Iron Works, not to beat a dead horse, but unless you guys have approved for the other side, this is incredible. I mean, Manistee is gonna, Manistee is gonna really, really blow up. I think it's gonna do it. You're doing it in the right way, I think, and all the municipalities and communities that I've worked with. I mean, you guys are doing it the right way.
We appreciate that. So, good, good, good band of brothers on the planning commission, so.
Yeah. Do you have any questions for me about?
If any, any of the commissioners have questions, please, uh, feel free.
Mark? Did I ask a question?
Sure, go ahead, Roger.
Uh, the property that's east of the Iron Works that the consumers cleaned all up, is that it city, or what's gonna happen with that vacant area?
Are you asking me?
Well, whoever, yeah, you if you.
I can probably be the, the most advised at this point. I've been working with consumers on it, and, uh, the guys are really good guys, and they told, I said, look, if I'm gonna come and invest all this money and take all the risk, I would really hope, you know, you could at least give me first crack at whatever. So Eric, which you guys know, I think he's on the county commission?
Eric Goodstead, Eric Goodstead.
Great guy, fabulous, and he said, Ken, I think, and I've been meeting with him, and he said, Ken, when you, when you, uh, submit your second SUP, maybe it would help you to scratch out something that you have designed for there, and as long as the city buys into it, and consumers really isn't out to make, you know, they're not a, really supposed to be a for-profit. So as long as, if I can make it, uh, uh, similar to the Iron Works project where it blends right in and it's a, a similar idea which we have in mind. Um, he said if we submit it and the, and the city, I mean, you guys have full control, really. Um, and the city says, you know what, we really like to see this development go this way, once I get, once I show you guys the initial concept, and you give your feedback on it, whether, hey, you know what, this will really work well for the Peninsula District and that piece of parcel, it'll work well for the city. He believes that consumers will give me a fair price where it doesn't go out to bid to, you know, a bunch of people and, and they can do what they want by right. So I'm hoping we can do it that way, and he said as long as we get an appraisal and it's fair market, consumers is gonna be okay. So I think I'll have something to present to you guys soon, but I got, uh, enough on my plate, but it's coming to fruition finally. I know the, the cannabis guys. I'm not sure which one of you guys have been talking to, and I know Zach's met him, Thad's been on Zoom calls with him, Mark Miller has been on Zoom, they're just outstanding guys. Um, and it's a publicly owned company, so it's not a, you know, a couple young hippies trying to make their way through. I mean, these guys can do it right, and it took me a lot of time to vet them out, to find someone that can properly do it, not leave the city hanging or me hanging or anything like that, but.
That'll be fine. Thank, thank you for your answer.
Hey, Ken, this is Mick Shumansky. Do you have any timelines on when, uh, they'll start to, uh, work on developing the, uh, grow facility at the backside of the Iron Works?
I, I, Zach, did I send you a copy of the lease? I think it's actually April they're gonna start. It's within sixty days, and they're gonna come, you know, it's public, it's a publicly owned company. If you guys have a pencil, you probably all do. Uh, it's called Body and Mind. The ticker symbol is, uh, BMMJ. And the two guys, I would tell you, uh, because I know about it, like I told Zach, uh, he learned me about it, that I can't tell anybody that doesn't know, but you guys are city officials. So if not insider trading, I would advise all you guys to buy some BMMJ stock. It's fifty-two cents a share right now. Just buy a thousand bucks and, uh, it's not insider trading. I made that clear. My attorney said, nope, you can sell them. So I told Zach too. But, uh, we're really good people. You can Google them and you'll see the CEO and the CFO. Uh, Mike Miller and, uh, Trip Hoffman, they're just great guys. They'll be spending a lot of time up here. But they've been on the phone with all your, uh, counsel, and I know, I know Zach's been on there, uh, Thad's been on there, and we're very happy, or else I'm sure you guys would have, would have heard something from them, but they're first-class operation, and they're, that's what I was crying for anyway, rather than to go for all these public subsidies. Bring in some private money and let them, uh, have at it and invest in the community, and I mean, that's what we want anyway. Yeah, that's true.
Can I ask something? Uh, did I hear you say that you're planning on having the farmers' market down there at the Iron Works too?
Yep, yep. I think that's gonna be a great amendment for the city. Um, it has in the back, if you guys remember, there's a rail spur that actually goes into that building. So there's an opening in the back that you can open up, the, the restaurant people all use it. You can drive a fuel car, truck, or whatever in there, so it'll be great for people to set up their booths and tear down and, and move out in inclement weather, snow, rain, whatever, and, and some of the condos we have designed for there, apartments, are gonna have a, uh, jack for the inside of the building, so I think that's gonna be one of the coolest places around, that you're gonna be able to walk out in your jack, either inside or outside, and you can get the activities down below. Hopefully the beast yard where she's operating now, you can now have glass wine or the fruit mark, or the fruit market for the locals. I think it's gonna be a big win, but, well, again, I mean, you guys are the ones that are helping me create the value. I'm not a genius by any means. You guys allowing me to, to, you know, assemble the group of people that are willing to pay and operate, so I'm very transparent in that. I think it's good for the, the community and anybody involved.
I've been working with Brian Garcia from the Chamber, because we had asked, they had asked to put, uh, Jesse's Garden at the senior center. I'm on the board there. Plus, we offered to have the farmers' market there, because we have plenty of parking and space. And he was working with the farmers and was supposed to get back to me, so when you said that, that was all news to me, so that is confirmed. They are gonna be coming to the Iron Works?
For the, uh, for the garden? I think that's what they call it, yeah, Jesse, Jesse's Garden is how it was spelled.
Yeah, yes, plus the farmers' market.
Yep, I had to talk to him a couple times. I talked to him. I told him to call me Saturday and I'll give him the confirmation. He did look at all the property up at the senior center, so I'm sure we're talking about the same thing, and he said that the, the soil wasn't that good up there, and he said we've already invested two years into tilling and, and making it a rich soil inside of the Iron Works, so he thought it would be much easier for everybody to go there. I thought not a, not a better time to use it when I need something from the city, right?
Hey, Ken, Ken and Marlene, I, I think you may be looking at two different things. Like, Ken, I think you're talking about actually the community farmer's, uh, gardens, correct?
Correct. Is that two different? I'm sorry.
Not the, the farmers' market is what's currently on Memorial Drive, right across the street from the, uh, uh, North Channel Brewery.
Correct. The farmers' market, yeah, we'd like to bring in, but the only thing I'm talking to right now is, uh, the person you're talking about, the community garden's got a Washington. Yeah.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify, because as far as I, we know, uh, the, the market is still located on that corner.
It is.
Washington and Memorial.
I think it'd be a good amendment to move it right inside to that front head, yeah.
All right, may I, may I say something? Yep. Can I add something? So I just, I just had a question and, uh, real quick here. So, uh, we're, we're transferring, and that's who are the, the special use permit here, um, with a certain site plan attached to it, so I, I'm cautioning Ken here from modifying from any existing site plan that's been approved and adding in a grow for a, a farmer's market, because I don't believe that's part of the initial site plan. So I'm, I'm cautioning you to, to review that before you agree to anything, um, with anybody, because then you'll have to come back here to amend your site plan. Um, right now we're just transferring it. I'm just, I am really just cautioning you. I don't, it's not that I, you know, one way or another, you know, will facilitate it, but before you enter into an agreement, ensure that you have permission to do that use.
Oh, for sure. Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, I appreciate that for sure. I wouldn't, I'm not entering into any agreements other than the outside, where the guy, the community garden that, uh, that, uh, Mick just brought up, but, uh,
That's what I'm, I'm cautioning you against that right now.
Oh, okay, even for the outside garden?
Yes.
Oh, okay, okay, no problem. Yeah, yeah.
And Zach, I, I don't think I'm far off on that. It's been a while since I've looked at it, but I would review it.
You're right. I didn't, I didn't wanna interrupt anyone, but yeah, that's not a, as of right now on this permit, that's not a permitted use. But you are, that is an amendment that could be made. You just have to go back to the planning commission.
Should I have him come talk to you guys? Or should it be me that presents it?
An amendment?
On the garden, on the outdoor garden?
Both. At, at another planning commission meeting, I would recommend coming forward. Right now, we're just transferring it to get it all squared away, but then if you wanna add additional uses, you would need to amend it. And then amend the site plan to get approval to do that, so.
Okay.
Uh, I was just cautioning, because I, I know you're, you're talking to agreements and, but if, if I recall correctly, it was not approved in the original site plan. So I said I want you to enter into anything, and then basically you, you, you've entered into an agreement you can't uphold, so.
Okay. Well, all I told him is he could use it, so I'll, uh, I'll get the necessary documents that you guys say that I, that I need, because I wasn't charging him or anything. He's just gonna use it for free, so. But I'll get the, uh, yeah, if you don't mind, Mike, uh, I'll email you and you can send me the necessary, or I can talk with Zach or whatever's better.
Right, yeah, I, I just, I recall a fencing in that area that was approved in the original site plan as well, as part of the, the requirements of the unloading and unloading area, as well as lighting, and, and I, I don't want to, I didn't want you to agree to something that there, that we couldn't grant because we were tied into the original site plan.
Okay, okay, no, that's helpful.
Uh, any other questions? Roger?
Yes, if I could just make one comment to Ken. He mentioned about hippies, and there's nothing wrong with a good old hippie. So, that's, that's squared away. That's all I got to say.
You know one, Roger?
I think that.
No, I don't, but, uh, I'm sure there's a round.
Okay, all right. Uh, you kill me. All right.
Nothing wrong with a good hippie.
All right. Question? No, okay. All right. Um.
You all set with me?
Uh, if there is no other questions, I don't have any. Everybody is taking care of that, so thank you, Ken.
Yeah, I'll see you guys very soon. If, uh, anybody needs anything, everybody knows how to get ahold of me. If you got any input or any other ideas that I can help the community out with that property, um, we got a loading dock, I got a forklift there, I got a guy there, we got plenty of stuff, so if you guys see any, uh, community needs, please, uh, yell at me that I can help.
Guys, appreciate it, thank you.
Okay, take care, guys.
All right, thank you.
Bye.
Um, so Mike or Zach, this needs a, a motion then, correct?
That, that is correct. All, all voting on Zoom actually requires a motion, so.
Okay. So, um, with this, is there a motion to transfer, excuse me? The, uh, Iron Works SUP transfer, their motion?
You're muted, Nick. Nick, you're muted.
Hello?
Roger, you make a motion?
Oh, yes. Oh, a motion on this transfer. Are we now to wait for the amendments that he's making before this transfer take effect, or can we make this transfer without making, without looking at the site plan? That's my question.
Yes, we can make the motion, uh, because that, correct me if I'm wrong, Mike, that's, uh, that is another.
So this is, so this is an SUP you guys have already approved. This is just a transfer of, of ownership. So there's this, the, the ideas you're talking about with the garden and everything, those would have to come back to you guys later.
So I'll, I'll make the motion that we approve the transfer, the special use permit for the Ironworks, um, as submitted.
Okay, second? Any seconds?
We'll second it.
Seconded by Bob, any other discussion? None, please take a roll.
Commissioner Solinsky?
Yes.
Commissioner Samansky?
Yes.
Commissioner Weiner?
Yes.
Commissioner McBride?
Let's press star six, Marlene.
Commissioner McBride?
Marlene unmuted, still freeze. Marlene?
Marlene?
Star six.
There she goes.
Yes. Commissioner Yoder?
Yes.
Chair Whitworth?
Yeah, thank you. Motion approved, whole business. Now we have none, public comments and communication. This time the uh, can, uh, make a comment? You have up to three minutes, at the three-minute mark, the moderator will shut down the microphone. So.
Okay, it looks like we've got Richard Blue here.
No, no comment, thank you.
Okay. Erin Glenn?
No comment, thanks.
Beth, do you have any com, public comments?
I don't, thank you.
And regress it, did, did we ever get an answer out of that one? Regress it, do you have any public comments you'd like to make? Regress it, do you have any public comments you'd like to make?
Not at this time.
And that looks like all of them, Mark.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to correspondence, I understand we have some correspondence.
Yep. I can go first here, it looks like, I think we've got nine or ten here, so uh, Mike and I are gonna go back and forth like usual.
Okay.
So everybody can strap in. All right, dear chairperson Whitworth, I am writing new to you to communicate my support for Lake Shore project to be presented to the planning commission. This project will provide Manistee with numerous benefits financially and strategically for growth. The economic impacts of this project are slated to increase annual visitor spending by four million and create thirty-five jobs. The indirect benefits of this project will be, will also be worth noting and looking forward to, competition is good for business and consumers. Business must remain competitive not only with each other on a main street scale, but reasonably when it comes to visitors' spending and decisions. The position and branding of this project will be very competitive and I personally feel it will elevate the current businesses who will invest in their properties to remain competitive. With miles of Lake Shore available to our community and visitors to experience a national shoreline through federal, state, and township parks, parks, the position of the Lake Shore Hotel Project cannot be beat. In addition to the visitor's spending, it is projected that at least four hundred thousand in property taxes will be generated for the city to put to good use. I moved to Manistee first in two thousand thirteen to co-op with the Packaging Corporation of America, and in two thousand seventeen moved here full-time. I saw the potential of this town to be a community with great employment opportunities and high quality of life. Now as an established resident, board member of the Chamber, Chamber of Commerce, treasurer of the Manistee J C's, an active community volunteer, I frequently interact with visitors and young professionals making the same decisions I made. From my perspective, there is a unique combination of opportunity forming in Manistee. Employers are dealing with a wave of retirements and highly-paid positions, both skilled trade and technical. Remote work opportunities are increasing due to improving communication infrastructure and changing economy. Young professionals are looking to relocate for good work and a good, and a great place to live, just like I did. Projects like this will continue to support development to our, of our community, making it a favorable place to live for all people in all stages of life. A great place to live often starts with a great place to visit. We as locals need to realize the potential for this project as the professional investors looking at our community already have. A project like this will happen somewhere and it will, it would be a disservice of Manistee's future to not allow it to happen here. Dylan Walker, Manistee Township.
Francis Holmes, one-two-five Hancock Street, Manistee, Michigan, four-nine-six-six zero, dated February twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-one. I would like to endorse the building of this motel on the Lake Shore motel site. It would add new jobs and give a boost to the local economy, people staying at the motel would eat in our restaurants and shop at our local stores. Whenever I travel and stay overnight, I go to local restaurants and shop in the town stores. This motel would be able to provide rooms for persons taking advantage of the convention center that will be built on River Street. A dial-a-ride bus could provide rides from that motel to the convention center, and this would be an additional revenue to the dark budget. I genuinely endorse the building of this new motel, not only for the economy boost, but also for the improved water lines that would be installed and be a benefit to the local property owners. Sincerely yours, Francis Holmes.
To the Manistee Planning Commission. I am a summer person, but my family and I own three cottages and four empty lots in Manistee County. I've spent every summer there since nineteen forty-nine, so I feel I have a legitimate vested interest in the future and prosperity of the area. I've read with trepidation about plans to replace the Lake Shore motel with Hampton Inn. This seems contrary to Manistee's recent goal to emphasize the beauty of the area, for example, this discussions to enhance the riverfront, or in the newly-planned attractive development at thirty-one and River Street. And Hampton Inn will not enhance Manistee's beachfront, a blocky cement high-rise resembling every motel on U S interstates is not keeping, is not in keeping with the ambiance of the beach nor the Victorian city. A clever architect and sensitive developer could create a much more appropriate and economically viable structure. I question how long the life expectancy is for these sort of generic motels. I imagine the owning corporation has a formula for that, and I expect that it isn't into the next century. In addition, I question the comments of Mr. Bucam over regarding parking, as reported in the news advocate. When he says guests typically leave between four and nine in the morning, really, at the beach? And if they arrive in the late afternoon, that's when many locals get off work and enjoy the beach and into the evening. Seems to me that these are thoughtless comments of somebody hustling for a building permit. Please give some thought to fifty years ahead or even a hundred. Should the beachfront be dilapidated, uninteresting, or high-rises? Or perhaps remarkably attractive and distinctive wa waterfront? Kindly submit this letter as a comment at your public hearing, respectfully, Virginia Kates.
Welcome to Manistee, I've been here twenty-five years and love it, I'm emailing, I'm emailing you today to let you know I'm against the size of the new first hotel, I believe it's way too big for the space and will make a mess of the beach, parking etc. You will agree if you're here this summer, please don't let this happen, Rita McCain.
Dear Mark, I'm writing you on, on behalf of the Manistee Manufacturers Council. As you know, the M M C represents manufacturers in our community, creating not just a central voice, but also a reli, reliable conduit for clear communication between our members, the public, and our government, and our local governments. With that in mind, the purpose of this letter is to make clear the M M C's support for the current Lake, Lake Shore Hotel Initiative. Since developers presented their preliminary, preliminary plans to the city council on December eighth, M M C members have watched with enthusiasm for what we are confident is a project that provides tangible and lasting value. The project not only provides additional attractive accommodations, accommodation of choice for vacationers, business travelers, and family returning to visit the area, but also powerful economic benefits that clearly enhance spending in our town by an estimated four million per year, create thirty-five new permanent jobs, and provide an additional four hundred thousand annually in taxes to local and state government. And there is also potential measurable indirect gains for the community as well, such as the storm, such as the potable and stormwater infrastructure improvements. Uh, as manufacturers, we understand and appreciate projects that will provide long-term job benefit, tax benefits, and improved infrastructure. These are real and bring tangible benefit to a broad spectrum of our community and not just a small or special, special select interest group. As business leaders in the community, we can, we can also attest to the desirability of this lodging choice for our customers, suppliers, and company staff who routinely visit our operations in Manistee every year. Perhaps more importantly, through our experience, the demographic that stays in this type of hotel is generally not utilizing other manst, is generally not utilizing other Manistee accommodations, choosing instead to take, seek similar hotels in the neighboring communities resulting in a very real spending loss for other local merchants. And while we value our, their important input, we also feel compelled to address the concerns raised by some in our community with regard to the potential to detract from the beauty of our local beach and shoreline and access, and access to it by existing residents. Most importantly, the, the construction of the new hotel is proposed for a site with the same current use, replacing an existing motel that has surpassed its useful life with a new modern facility that fulfills the same purpose. This project does not propose the destruction of habitat, natural areas, or current parks and beaches. It simply replaces an existing facility with a similar footprint. And with regard to aesthetics of the beach and the shoreline, is important to understand that the existing tree, tree line height will mitigate concerns about views from the south and east directions. The M M C appreciates the opportunity to comment on an initiative we strongly believe is good for our community. We wish to thank the planning commission for their thoughtful consideration of our comments and encourage them to move forward with the expeduit, expedite, expedituous approval of the Lake Shore project. Sincerely, Jim Reithel.
Manistee, progress or stagnation? Progress and stagnation are the only options for everything and anything in human endeavors. The fate of cities and communities are no exception to the rule. Cities, like all living things, evolve or die. Many cities in Michigan and throughout the country have died while others have thrived, the common denominator for success and failure is a community's leadership having foresight or being blind to the realities facing their community. We all know what Manistee has been, do we know it will be in the future? The answer is clear and a definitive no. Manistee has been in the county, or has been and continues to be in a state of confusion. While our neighbors in Muskegon, Langton, and Frankfort continue to evolve and bright, evolve into vibrant, vibrant communities, we have been stuck in the endless debate over economic development versus stagnation. Stagnation has been the clear winner thus far. Many consider Manistee to be an industrial city while others view it as a tourist destination. These two groups are the main reasons for the state of community confusion that has paralyzed the city and county. The industrial group is living in the past, industry does not view Manistee as a manufacturing center. The factors are many, ob, obvious, and not the subject of this message. Basically, Manistee is outside the sphere of main industrial supply stream, logistics are complex and costly for any new industry, uh, project to be feasible. The tourist group wants to freeze Manistee in its current state, they do not want anything. They oppose any proposal that would help the city forge a new path in the future. Sadly, they are an older generation that is making selfish, excuse me, selfish decisions at the expense at the younger, of the younger generation being born and growing up in the community. Manistee can be successful with both a tourist and business destination. In addition to its seasonal population, second homes in first, Manistee is a real and permanent community whose fate is in, and deliberately tied to the success of failure in, of city and county leadership. The community's future is reflected in decision made and trends set by its youth. Whenever a young Manistee citizen leaves for school or other opportunities, they never come back. There is little to attract them back to their hometown. Economic development is almost nonexistent, social advancement opportunities and jobs are few. The hospital industry creates jobs for the local youth and generates tourism revenue for the community. The Lake Shore Hotel Project, the portage point in, the spirit of the Woodman and Gateway Project, should be welcomed and incentivized instead of throwing roadblocks in their path. For reference to the exempl, exemplary, excuse me, exemplary city manager working for Betterment in his community, it has a website for Muskegon wins city approval. Manistee County cannot even reach concessions on using available federal and state funds to build a sewer system in a network. Most subfix systems in the area are draining into the jewel of our community, portage lake. Economic and community development requires smart decisions-making, or start smart decision-making and hard work, doing nothing and blocking everything is easy, just won't know, and the case is closed. When the light bulb was invented, there was an urgent and real drive to protect the candle and oil line producers. The car industry sparked a similar desire to protect the horse-tron carriages, saddle and whip makers, the world moved into the electric grid, the highway system, the electric age, despite the opposition. Does Manistee wanna cling to the candle, the horse-tron carriage, or embrace sustainable development and move into the future? That is the only decision facing us as a community, signed here.
Dear Mark Whitworth, I would like to express my excitement about the new hotel on First Street Beach. I've been a business owner in Manistee for twenty-five years. I'm on seventy-eight Division Street, Port City Clipper is my business and my home. I love our town and over the years have invested my time, effort, and heart here. I believe in our town, but so many times when there was talk of a hopeful progressive shift, it always fell short and failed. I would love to keep our small-town charm and at the same time have progressive economical climb. Maintaining our natural beauty and spacious environment is important. I do not see any problem with the new hotel, I believe we need a place for our beach, on our beach for lodging and dining. How wonderful it would be to enjoy the view while dining and listening to some live music. Many times over the years I have greeted visitors over on the River Walker Pier and they ask me with surprise, isn't there a place to have a drink and enjoy a view around here? A five-story hotel should not be a problem or a hindrance, the details need to be thought through though. I think planning ahead for traffic needs to be addressed, a left-turn signal at, at First and Maple could really help during busy times. Hiring more city workers at the beach and park are important key things to keep men, important things to keep maintained. The sewer, well, that's a big problem. I've personally witnessed the sewage rolling down the river, it's appalling, this has to be stopped. This city is, this city is going to grow, so I say let's be proactive. The town has many positive, hard-working people who believe in it. Focusing on the positive has never, never been the norm here, unfortunately. It seems that many are afraid of change, but without change, there is no growth. That applies to the people. We are on this earth to make things better, we have only one chance to make a good first impression. Cleaning up this town, fixing the Riverwalk, the new plan for the gateway to the city, and the new hotel are all great things for our community. Please stop being afraid and negative. Let's be excited and supportive of those who want to create a better Manistee while keeping its lovely charm, sincerely, Monica Robinson.
This one's dated February eleventh, twenty-twenty-one, and it's from Mark Whitworth, Chair, City of Manistee Planning Commission. Dear Mark, recently the Manistee Area Chamber of Commerce approved the below-resolution regards to the Lake Shore Hotel Project. Whereas the Manistee Area Chamber of Commerce was resolved on the eleventh day of February twenty-twenty-one, here states its support of the redevelopment of two acres of land on First Street, Manistee, Michigan, where the current Lake Shore Hotel is located. Whereas the Manistee Area Chamber of Commerce supports the planning and development, or P U D, whereas the Manistee Area Chamber of Commerce supports the benefits of increased tactical values to the local units of government from this development. Whereas the Manistee Area Chamber of Commerce supports the thirty-five permanent new jobs from this project and numerous construction jobs. Whereas the Manistee Area Chamber of Commerce supports an estimated four million dollars in increased tourism to support existing businesses. Sincerely, Stacy Bitwer, President and CEO, Dennis P. McCarthy, Board Chair, Manistee Area Chamber of Commerce.
Is that your last one, Mike?
I got one more.
Oh, you have one, okay, so this is my last one here. Dear Mr. Samansky, I'm writing regarding the special use permit for Victorian Reserves LLC. With marijuana alley on Arthur Street, why do we need a factory to grow it? The owners state they will minimize and mitigate light, noise, and odor effects in the area. Where is the guarantee? The, this is handwritten by the way, so if I'm struggling, it's cause I'm trying to understand here. The final plan is, is for a factory to become a. The final plan is, is for a factory to become a thirty thousand square feet processing facility. What is the city going to gain from this operation? If we will, if we allow one of these operations, will it open the door for the others to want to move into the, into the area? Maybe they should find a new location. Is it possible for members of the Planning Commission and maybe some city council members tour one of the operating facilities to get a fresh hand review as to what it is involved in this type of operation? The billboard on the highway promoting marijuana has been, has been changed. But the new one is no better. It seems we are eager to promote this bad idea. Respectfully, Thomas Appella.
Good day Chairman Whitliff. I want to express my support for the redevelopment of the Lake Shore Project on First Street across from the beach. I'm not going to go into all the positive numbers that we know and the positive impact it will have on, for our community. I believe the job of the City Planning Commission is to approve a use if it fits the technical criteria. The CPC should make sure it fits a location and due to its unique location has a great opportunity to, to do just what it, what, excuse me, to do just that with a request for a planned unit development or PUD. This hotel needs to be a destination hotel, not just a place to spend a night or so. Number one, does the exterior fit the location? Number two, what amenities will be, will it be offering? Number three, is parking an issue? I certainly hope it's the only with an extremely large lot across the street from the location. This is the type of thing the CPC, the city council, and the city manager can solve to make sure parking doesn't hinder an amazing development. Number four, the height of the structure is another cause for concern for some. Currently, there are many pine trees east of the current hotel. The view through these trees is extremely limited. The number of floors and amount of rings needed to make this project work monetarily is important. Let's all work to make sure this project is successful and can be all it can be. Thank you for your work. Our thank you for the work you and the CPC does. Jeffrey Dons, County Commissioner, District Five.
Thank you. That, that is it then? All right. Thank you, Zach and Mike. Okay, move on to staff. Staff reports.
All right, earlier in the meeting I said, it takes a motion during Zoom meeting, I meant a real call vote, although it's have to be a real call vote, so I want to make that fraction real quick during Zoom. And then I, I was at a recent city council meeting and I was questioning about the sign ordinance. We had actually sent forward a request for clarification from the city about the sign ordinance and I thought we had done that and verified that, but I was questioned again about it. Where they came back and said they didn't want us to develop the sign ordinance at that time. And then I was questioned again about it, so kind of getting mixed signals here on that, so I don't know, maybe something that, that, you know, do you guys want us to develop it or do you not, or? I'm, I'm kind of, kind of getting both there, so there's that. Trying to think of what else. Trails, I think is something I should touch on. We're partnering with Network Northwest in the area to help put the trails into the county recreation plan. Many communities have signed on to that, villages as well as townships. We're moving forward with the scope of work as well as like getting that established. So we're hoping to be working on that later this summer with Network Northwest. But, you know, if you're a, an update here would, you know, let you guys know that that is moving forward, so.
Thank you. Zach, you have anything?
I have anything. I'm all set.
Nancy?
Nope.
Okay. Now move along to member discussions. We'll start with Roger. You have anything, Roger? You're on mute.
Okay, no, I don't have anything up and that things are, when are we going to get together again? How about that?
I hope soon.
Oh, okay.
I hope very soon. So the last, there are twenty-five over west is still in
Okay, nothing, I'm good, thank you.
Okay, one thing I did have when we had that meeting with the city council where they had the redevelopment stuff. Normally, when we've had these joint meetings, the commissions have got a chance to say things at this meeting. That meeting didn't allow any of us on the commissions to speak. They cut a people off. So the city messed up on that. That's it, so I got.
Nick? Nick, you're on mute.
Have, have we actually, are we continuing to be in contact with the Hampton Inn? Do we know if, if they're going to be submitting anything in a reasonable amount of time?
We anticipate something very shortly. The, the requirements of site plan have not, have not been satisfied from our aspect to consider it an actual application that, that we can then move forward. We anticipate that will be resolved quickly and we'll be moving forward to Site Plan Review Committee and then calling the actual meeting. And then we'll move from there forward into, you know, obviously the public hearing at that time, so. With a, with the interest in this project and then the twenty-five person cap that Mark just I would be hesitant to call this a in-person meeting. I think that it would score, I mean, that we'd have to hold over Zoom with that cap on there, because I anticipate us reaching that twenty-five person cap very quickly.
Okay. Have, have they been getting copies of some of the letters so they kind of understand how to prepare for the public? Or are they allowed to get copies of the letters?
We could send them to them. I think with the, the other entities that are facilitating as well as the comments in the paper, they're well aware of some of the comments that are, that have been out there, but we can send them the letters if that's what the, the commission wishes.
Well, I, I would just curious whether or not that was something that was normally done, just so that they don't get blindsided. And perhaps, again, you know, I know that they have a little bit of leeway as far as design, you know, as far as color and, and some decor changes to kind of blend in as much as possible on the structure as far as with the, you know, the Victorian or the beach kind of aspect. And, and I've seen some of the Hampton Inns down in Florida would certainly look more beachy than the ones that you would see off of the side of the highway that people refer to for the Hamptons.
Yeah.
It's probably not a bad idea to send letters, send the letters of, of support and denial, I guess, to them, so they have everything. It's a good idea.
Is that, is that the council, the commission's wish?
Bob, what do you think?
I think it's a good idea. I think they need to know where they stand with the community.
Roger? Yes? Okay.
Yep.
Are you sure that they have them?
Yeah.
Marlene?
Do they, have they purchased the property or is this still speculation? Because I know in the past, for us to go through all the review and everything for someone who doesn't even own the property is a lot of time and effort. The last time I changed with the planning commission, or do we, are we just still going to take a look at everything, even though they don't own the property?
The last time I checked on it, it's still pending. It is not closed, but it's, it's been a little while.
Yeah, we wouldn't bring forward a a request like this without some kind of control over the property. Whether that's a pending agreement to purchase with whatever. But I'm hesitant to, to speak on the property because what I've said before is we don't have an application that's met the criteria. It's subject to change. So, and, and in fact, it's, it's gone out for corrections again, so I mean, it could come back completely different. So, so anything that we even discuss is, is just not not something that we should move forward with. So until that meeting's called, I, I am not comfortable with getting into this too, too deeply.
But, but it's not unusual for somebody to have a, a contract that basically says they'll purchase once the agreement has been reached with the city to be able to build.
That is not uncommon. You are correct.
Yeah, yeah, I know that, yeah.
Pam, you have anything?
Yeah, I want to know why the city council is so anti-sign ordinance. Who do we need to talk to? Who's, who's anti-sign, Mick? Because we've got all this stuff coming in and no way of, of, I mean, I mean, Ken Armour, he wants his own sign down toward the Peninsula District. Everybody's going to be wanting their own sign, and I don't understand why you guys don't want it.
Yeah, and, and I don't either. I honestly, I, I, I thought that the decision was that we did want, but, you know, I, I can't speak for the whole council. But I, I don't know why anyone would object, you know, other than the fact that it is, it is a monumental task. I mean, it is not easy. And, and my suggestion, I think, that I made before is that we, we maybe tackle it by sections or streets or areas and try to, instead of trying to eat the whole elephant in one bite.
At, at least hit the thirty-one corridor, at, at the very least.
Well, and I think, and I think it's important too, if we do thirty-one, I think it should be easy to do River Street. And then I think at the same time, since we know this is, you know, all the, all that's going on down at the beach, address the beachfront property as well. So again, I would hope that, you know, a monument sign will be part of the proposal instead of having some big neon thing that obviously will cause consternation. So.
I will comment on, on that district. Outside of certain criteria within that district, signs are not allowed. As a PUD coming in, or they're very limited, so those are like home-based business signs as well as, so PUDs allow for flexibility, as you guys know. So that's how you're seeing a sign, but that has to be approved with total control by you guys. So if you don't like it, just don't approve it. So.
So, so our monument, our monument sign, you know, I don't mind if they have, you know, something on the side of the building, but you know, again, I agree that, you know, we don't want it to look like the Las Vegas Strip either, so.
You don't want any waterfalls or?
Waterfall would be fine, just not the neon, so.
So is the thing be, the sign ordinance being held up, is it by the city manager that he doesn't want to tackle this or?
No, I, I just think the, I don't think, and I, and I take complete fault for this. I think I, I brought it forward looking for direction. They, they misunderstood or misinterpreted what I was saying or didn't feel that I was expressing a big enough concern on it, so. What I, what I, what I might recommend is a, a suggestion from council on, you know, if they would like us to develop it, a certain area they would like us to concentrate on, and then we can move from there. So if it's River Street, it's River Street. It's US thirty-one corridor, it's US thirty-one corridor. But direction in that aspect, and that way it minimizes any tasks that we you know, that we undertake. We're not undertaking it all at once. We can put purpose into those areas. We can, you know, go out and move over, you know, the next couple of months and, and look over those areas and say, you know, what do we feel is appropriate here? What are our recommendations? Bring them before you guys, as opposed to trying to do either in, in one size fits all sign ordinance, which is not going to work. And, but direction is something that's needed because while we got questioned about it last time, we brought it forward for direction. They, they didn't feel that. Or they're, they're kind of back and forth on it. They didn't give us that direction, so I don't want to bring something forward like we have with other things in the past. And then when they go to get approved, they're denied or they don't feel it, it isn't. So I do take responsibility for that and, and maybe I wasn't expressing that enough. Really what we are looking for is yes, you want us to develop this and choose an area that you want us to concentrate on.
So you got to admit, you had a win during the last city council meeting. Every ordinance you suggested got approved.
Yeah, I was, I was, I was worried a little.
Not yet. We still have another reading.
We got one more reading.
That's true.
And we did, we did send out a memo and I hope the city council got that. Explaining that a little bit more because there was questions. Yeah, I mean, I, I just want to make sure it goes smoothly and everybody wants us, when we put the time in that we, we're, we're investing in on something that's mine, as opposed to us wasting time that we could invest in something else.
She's okay.
Is that, is that it, Pam?
That's it, yep. I just think it's better to be a little proactive now than trying to get rid of something ugly later on.
Right, because we got enough ugly.
Excellent point.
Do, yes.
I'm happy with everything, thanks.
All right. And a question for Mike. Mike, are we, are you getting any BLITE reports? I, I know.
No, I, I do not receive BLITE reports. I don't, and Zach doesn't either. As far as any motion or movement on those. The city police department handles that for the most part, but we are not privy to those reports.
Okay. You want to be?
If you guys want to be, because basically what we can do is, i- if there's a desire on the commission to have those, we usually forward them out from you. But if they're, if they are being sent out and including the city PC's email on that, that would be, if that's what they would like, would be awesome.
Would, would everybody like to see that?
I, I'd like to see them, yeah.
Well, Mick, Bob?
Yep.
Marlene?
Yes, I'd like to see that also.
Okay, I'll, I'll talk to, I'll talk to Thad about, because I, you know, again, I know that they have been doing some updates on the BLITE. It'll be interesting once, once your new ordinance comes through. Because there are a number of those questionable structures out about.
There are.
Some very close to the planning commission. You, you could throw a rock at one of those structures from your office.
Well, if they're existing, remember their grandfather to an extent. Now, if it's a BLITE ordinance, though, that, that's enforceable usually through the building inspector in the, in the police department. We don't typically enforce on those guys, so I just wanted to let you know that, so there's no confusion on that. We do zoning and receive some questions today about storage of trailers and people's front yards. And there is a time limit on how long they can be in your driveway, and they are required to be stored in your side or rear yard, so.
And, and they can't block And, and they can't block the sidewalk.
That's correct. Well, that's city property, so, yes.
Right. Well, the sidewalk is actually the, the state, the, right away, that's a state law.
Not in the city, only along the major state highways, not in the city streets. City streets is local municipal.
Well, I thought there was a state, a state ordinance about blocking sidewalks.
No, those are all local ordinances. Some other cities, they allow you to park on the sidewalks. Especially in the wintertime because they don't have off-street parking.
Right.
Luddington.
Yep.
Okay. Now, that's all I have, so. With that, I, I just want to thank everybody for tonight. Mike, Zach, Nancy, planning commissioners, and everybody that attended. So with that, I would take a motion to adjourn.
We got two more hours to go.
I don't think. Out of cigarettes, so.
Yeah.
All right, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
All right, have a good night. And.
Good night.
Soon.
Good night, everyone.
Bye, thanks.